We're going to go ahead and call the meeting to order. Welcome to the March 9, 2023, meeting of the Planning and Zoning Commission on this. This is an open meeting and is being taped and recorded and videotaped by the city. The proceedings are being televised by representatives of the public media, the public, local cable and/or radio stations, and may also be rebroadcast. The total number of commission members present is seven. It will require majority vote of those present to pass a motion. Members of the public, when called upon, are required to state their name and address for the record so that we may know who is speaking and be able to contact them later at a date if necessary on that. Would ask if you would check your cell phones, make sure they're off or on mute. Would appreciate that. Would like to welcome our mayor, Phil Good, and Councilman Matoria to the meeting here, and Councilman Tenney. Good to see you there. I'd like to have the members of the commission introduce themselves and to give our two new gems a little reprieve, we'll start with a Tom.
Oh, Tom Riley.
Good morning, Tom Hutchison. It's a pleasure to be here today.
Good morning, Ted Gamboge.
My name is Don Michaelman. Thank you for attending.
Jim Kloszuski. I am honored to be able to serve on this committee for the first time and look forward to making some contributions, hopefully.
Jim Whiting. I'm one of the new people also. Thank you.
Good morning, Susan Graham.
First up on the agenda is the minutes from the January 12, 2023, meeting. Are there any corrections? If no correction, is there a motion concerning the minutes?
So moved. Tom Riley.
A motion's been made. Is there a second?
Susan Graham, second.
A motion's been made and seconded. Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, the same sign? None? Minutes are approved. First item is SIT 22-021, Site Plan Review for Proposed Sunset Courtyard Apartments, consisting of 32 apartments on approximately 2.0 acres, zoning MFM, multifamily, medium density. Property owner is Daniel and Sage. I am going to have a challenge here. Rodbold? Okay. Appicent, Distinctive Homes and Architects, Site APN 111-11-139-140-141-142-143, and -143. Location 837 Sunset Avenue. Tammy.
Thank you. Good morning, Chairman, members of the commission, Tammy Dewett, community planner. So before you today is a site plan review, which we're getting very familiar with these. So this will be a site plan review for 32 apartments. There's two units per building. There are 16 buildings under 2.0 acres. It meets the zoning requirements for lot coverage and setbacks and amount of units allowed. There are five parcels currently, and they'll be combined into one parcel before we issue permits. And this is being brought to you per the water policy that anytime there's a water service application that has to go to water issues, then we have a site plan or another planning project coming before Planning and Zoning Commission. So here's the subject property. This is Fair Street down here. We have the fairgrounds over here. We have fries, and this is the county building. And then, so these are the five parcels. It is impacted by the creek and a floodway, but all the proposed dwellings are outside of the floodway. Here's a close-up. There are currently, I believe, two houses on the property which will be demoed, and this is considered an infill development because we have the zoning already in place and all the infrastructure is already in place. We're just bringing in projects that are allowed now per the zoning and probably a little bit more usable for that area. This is multifamily, medium density. In the area, there's no rezonings required, and this isn't allowed use per the zoning district. Here's the proposed site plan. So we have two flood. This line here is one flood line. This is the other flood line. All of the proposed structures are outside of the floodway or floodplain, so there's no extra development criteria. It does meet all our setback requirements, and all the parking is in the area that puts potential for flooding, which is allowed per Flood Control District. This is reviewed by all reviewing agencies, Fire, Public Works, and Building, and there were no issues or concerns with the site plan as presented right now, and we'll be looking into more detail as we start getting the permits moving forward. So this is what we propose. It's kind of a courtyard concept. So you walk to your apartments, and the parking's out front. There's 16 units proposed. On the lower floor is one unit. On the top floor is a second unit. This kind of shows you what each unit, so each one will have a fireplace area outside on the deck and their own deck space on their units. Like I said, this was sent out to all reviewing agencies. This is what we review with the site plan. We look at the building lot and setback requirements, which it meets. We look at the internal circulation, which there's no issues from our, for Public Works or from the Fire Department on how it's being proposed. They will have all required landscaping. No screening is required because it's adjacent to other multifamily zoning, has all the required parking. And then this was also heard by the Water Issue Subcommittee on Tuesday, and they unanimously recommended approval for the water service application. This one kind of went out of order because of the canceling of the last commission meeting. So this is our recommended action. That completes my presentation, and I'm free to answer any questions that you have.
Any questions for Tammy?
Tammy, Tom Hutchison. Can you tell me how high that chimney is?
No, I didn't have the, I don't have the height elevations, but it can't not, they can't exceed 35 feet.
And it doesn't?
Correct.
This may be, this may be a question for the developer, but that fireplace, is that natural gas or wood burning?
I'd have to defer that to the applicant.
Do we know what flood zone is there?
We have both, and they're both outside.
I know they're outside, but I'm just like, you know, flood zone rating, is it?
Well, you have the floodway and the floodplain, so the lower line, this is the floodway, this is the floodplain, I think. This is a really bad area. This is not so bad area. How's that?
We'll let her call it that.
It's a technical phrase.
I usually know red's bad, green, blue's okay, green's better, so.
Would the applicant like to make any comments? Name and address, too, sir.
Terry, Distinctive Homes and The Architect, and P.O. Box 3988, next door to Post Office, the address. So I appreciate you looking at this site plan. We're excited to present this to the city, and we're looking to provide more apartments for the area. Apartments are in big demand now, so we try to make something very nice with, hopefully, a reasonable budget project. So I appreciate your opportunity here and hope that you will like and approve it, so.
Okay.
Any other questions or?
Questions for the applicant?
Fireplace, is it wood or gas?
It's wood burning, and it's about, I think it's 25-foot tall. It's per code is the height, was the other question, so.
Tom, is the lower fireplace wood burning as well?
Yes.
Doesn't look like much of a chimney.
Well, it's a chimney for the two flues.
Okay, and in the drawings, it shows that they're not connected.
Right, we have one flue going up the back, and then the top one goes beside it, so there's two flues running up the chimney. Of course, there's another building there which is not visible, so it's adjacent to the other building, the chimney.
Okay.
Other questions? What type of landscaping are you going to have, either low water usage, no water usage, or what?
Well, it'd be per code. The partner of this is a landscape, big landscape contractor in Phoenix, and he wants to put a swimming pool, lots of activity courts, and the like, so the final landscape plan has not been submitted yet, but it'll be apparently pretty nice, so.
I'm thinking more of using less water, too.
Well, I think that's given that that's what the code says, that we would be using those plans, but those decisions haven't been made yet or that plan produced.
Okay. Any further questions of the applicant?
I'm struggling with his wood fireplace. It's Prescott. You know, in my house, there's, I don't burn anything except natural gas. The barbecues are on natural gas, the smokers on natural gas. Do you feel that it's safe to have a wood burning fire outside?
Well, it's Sunset Courtyard Apartments, so you can see we have a courtyard here, and each individual space has a courtyard, and we were trying to do a nice focal point for each courtyard, and usually an outdoor fireplace that's usable is wood burning. We could do gas, but would people use the gas fireplace? We're just trying to make it usable.
This is Susan Graham. I also have a problem with the wood burning fireplace, and besides the risk of fire from embers coming from the fireplace itself, people are going to have to dispose of the ashes, and a lot of times people dispose of it prematurely and create problems as a result. We had a natural gas burning fireplace, outside fireplace, for some time and thoroughly enjoyed it.
So you used it?
We used it all the time.
Okay, all right.
Any other questions, applicant? Thank you, sir.
Hi, Jim Kloszuski. Just wondering on your pricing strategy, which I don't know that you're going to know that now, but would this lean more towards the affordable housing? We have a lot of shortage of that these days.
What is affordable? I mean, I'm the architect. I don't establish the rents, so what is affordable? It's 1,000 square feet, two-bedroom, so.
Well, I was just wondering if, based on your construction cost, if you have an idea where the rents might have to be? I was just curious. It's not?
I have not, I do not know where the rents will be at present. Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions? Thank you, sir.
All right, thank you.
Any members of the public like to make any comments concerning this application? Name and address, sir?
My name is, my name is Thomas Harmel. My address is 535 Roma Avenue. What he just spoke about, how much would this project cost? That's what I wanted to know.
That's usually something we don't necessarily get into because that's up to the property owner making decision how much money they want to put in the construction.
I was just learning, because affordable housing, I'd like to know how much something like that would cost.
It's presently up to bid. I don't know the total cost yet, so it's being determined now, so.
Guesstimate it, you know, approximately, anything such?
Of the rents or the total cost of the construction?
No, the total cost of the, the construction of the entire thing.
Well, I would think about $175 a square foot and at about, I think, 20,000 square feet or something like that, so whatever those numbers add up to be in the book. Correct. Thank you.
Okay. Anybody else from the public? If not, thoughts of the commission members? Tom?
I'd like to make a motion to approve agenda item, oh, I should probably read what they put up there. Move to recommend approval of SITE 22-021, Sunset Courtyard Apartments, per the site plan submitted.
We have a motion. Is there a second?
Tom Hutchison, I'll second that.
All right. Motion, second. Any further discussion? I have an item. Would you be mean to making a recommendation with the motion that it be a gas fireplace versus wood burning, or not?
Fine. Yeah, I would agree to that.
All right, does the second agree to that?
I think it's a great idea.
That would help my vote.
It would help my vote, too.
Okay. Does everybody understand the motion, then? We're doing the motion that's up there on the screen with the recommendation to the City Council, and three members of the City Council are sitting here right now. That'd be gas fireplace, not wood burning. Okay, do you understand, sir, why?
Yes.
Okay. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign? Next on the agenda is REZ 22-002, a request for rezoning of the portion of Taylor Hicks School Site from SF9, single-family, to MFM, multifamily, medium density, to allow for six manufactured homes to provide teacher housing and housing for public safety staff on a 1.06-acre portion of AP 116-12-025. Property owner slash applicant is Prescott Unified School District, 1845 Campbell Avenue. George?
Thank you, sir. This is a request for a rezoning of a portion of a school property. There are a number of reasons for it, and I'm going to talk for a little while on this one, just because of the circumstances associated with it and the fact that it is proposed specifically to be affordable housing, as opposed to most of the projects that come before you that say affordable housing, but there's not a targeted population of that affordability. This project will have a targeted population for the affordability, excuse me, the affordability range. The proposed rezoning is just a portion of the northeast section of the property of the Taylor Hicks Elementary School Site. It's a single parcel. It's zone single-family nine, which is a residential, single-family zoning district. Most of the development around it is single-family, other than the school. This is the only school site that I'm aware of in Prescott that's zoned single-family and not multifamily or commercial. The other sites are multifamily or commercial. This site has a relatively large area, which I will zoom in on in just a moment, of primarily unused overflow parking lot, and that overflow parking lot is the area that we've shown in the site plan that they submitted to us. It's in your packet, but it'll also be up on the screen in a moment, for the proposed housing development. It is six units. It is in this smaller area, and I'm going to see if I can point at a few things. Access is from Campbell Avenue. There is an existing driveway and existing parking already created here. This is some of the parking for the school, but parking will be designated for these units within this site. It is not an overburdened parking lot, so there's sufficient room for the additional demand for the six units. The area is relatively flat. It is roughly eight feet lower than the homes to the north of it, so most of the construction that would occur here if this is approved would actually be below the eye level of anyone looking out of the back of their properties. The site is partially moved into, the rezoning site is partially moved into the field area to allow for sufficient room for the units to meet minimum setbacks and minimum setbacks between the units. So we have two different criteria, one to property lines and another between residential units, so this would be able to meet both of those with the site design that's been provided. And this is the site design overall, and I do have a little bit more of a better view of it, a closer view of it. The units are staggered through the site so that they're not just all lined up in a row. There's a reason for the staggering. There is a major sewer line that runs through the site with an easement associated with it. That sewer line is very deep, and the easement is relatively wide compared to a lot of our water and sewer line easements because of the depth of the line. To dig down to fix it takes a wider trench in order to be safe. So the units have to stay out of the easement, not just off of the sewer line. That pushes them apart in a relatively wide manner. So you'll see these three are fine. The easement runs like this, and then the line deviates and runs up to this point, and then follows the backs of the properties. So the units are pushed off of it in order to stay out of the area that we might need access to at some point in the future, should the city have any issue and need to repair a line.
George, while you're on that graphic, does the ball field stay in action?
As I understand, the ball field will stay in action, whatever level of action it's in now. I think it's less of a ball field and more of a playfield, but we do have representatives from Prescott Unified School District, PUSD, here, who may be able to give you some more detail of that in a moment.
Because I'm thinking foul balls.
Good point. Not something zoning normally looks at, but we have had some very interesting fixes for properties adjacent to golf courses, so I know there are ways to protect those homes. The purpose of this, and you have the application from PUSD with their explanation in it, the purpose of this is to try to provide some initial and temporary housing for teachers. One of the issues that I'm sure they will talk more in-depth about when they come up, PUSD is having a problem getting teachers here, finding a place to live at the, at the beginning of their terms, when they first start employment with us. They haven't been able to, to address that in some cases, and teachers have declined jobs because they can't find housing. The idea of this would be to allow for six homes. There is a working process underway right now for the city and PUSD to come to an agreement where we will help with the utilities and we will, in fact, have the same opportunity for police or fire, public safety personnel, for temporary housing, to allow them to get established in the area and find permanent housing. It is not intended to be permanent housing for teachers on the site. It is intended for new teachers who are just beginning their employment with PUSD to have housing and then be able to move on to more permanent housing throughout the community. The same would be the case for a police officer or fireman for the city. Should this agreement work out, we would then have an opportunity for a policeman and a fireman to have the same circumstance. When we hire new, we're having some of the same problems that PUSD is having. Bringing someone new into the area, they're brand-new hired for the city, they're starting at the lowest level of pay generally, and they're having trouble finding housing. This is an opportunity to actually experiment on providing housing in a fashion like this because we haven't done this anywhere else in the city. It's been done elsewhere. The term is "teacherage," and it's something that's often used on facilities, on reservations, for instance, it's pretty common because of the shortage of housing, but it's been used elsewhere where a campus has provided housing for the employees of that school to live on-site, basically. That is something that we haven't seen here. We think that might be a way to help with one small, actually tiny, aspect of the affordable housing issue we have, by having very targeted housing for people that we know are having issues with our housing market, teachers, policemen, firemen. So this is an experiment. This is an experiment that is, in my opinion, very likely to succeed. This is a good use of property that is overflow parking, that rarely gets overflowed into. There is additional space around the site that could be used for additional parking should they ever need it. It is not anticipated, from my understanding from PUSD, is not anticipated for the school itself to expand on the site. There's no intention to make the buildings bigger at this point in time. So we believe from a staff perspective that this is an opportunity to actually try out affordable housing on a situation where it's not a free-for-all. This is not a free-market situation. This is a government entity owning it and will be able to maintain the ownership of it over time. For PUSD to do anything different would require a change in their zoning. They would have to come back to you. Again, our recommendation is this project per this site plan.
Do we know what the rent would be?
I believe they will be able to answer that question for you, yes.
I have a question, Tom Riley. When you're talking about them, the PUSD owning the building, buildings?
Buildings and the entire site.
And the entire site. And you're saying that if they choose to sell those off, they have to come back here and go through a rezoning?
This is for multifamily zoning for this particular site plan. They wouldn't rezone, but they would have to come back to revise the site plan. One of the reasons we put in our recommendations for most rezonings that it be at least in substantial conformance to the site plan that's attached is so that we don't get a bait-and-switch situation that can happen under other types of zoning, where you just change the property and it's basically a blank slate. We have a site plan that's attached to the zoning for that reason. It gives some comfort to the neighbors, it gives some comfort to the city that we know what to expect.
Ownership, if they don't change the site plan, ownership is irrelevant.
Correct. It's changing the site plan.
It's changing the site plan. So basically, and this is for the, for the school district when, when they come up to speak, if the ownership does change, that's up to the school district to make that decision, correct?
That is correct, yes. We're not locking in the ownership of the property. We're locking in the zoning to the site plan.
That's, I wanted to make that clear. Thank you.
Thank you.
Susan Graham, I had a question.
Sure.
What about ordinance 4925-1463, which allows manufactured homes, only manufactured home parks with an MH zone designation? Does that, how does that impact this?
This is effectively a manufactured home park from its functionality. It's multifamily zoning. The units will be individually occupied, but it is a series of pre-manufactured structures in a site together, so it meets that requirement and that definition. That's how we ended up with this particular zoning district. It's the least intrusive district for the neighboring properties. It's tied to a site plan, so we're not going to have something like an apartment complex come in later without coming back through a public process. That means notification of the neighbors back before this body and ultimately back to the City Council. It's a pre-designed site. It'll have amenities designed into it. The landscaping will be designed into it. We don't have that yet, obviously, because of the circumstances. It will have to meet parking requirements, setback requirements, building height requirements. It has to meet all of our code requirements.
We still need to hear from a number of people on this, but a thought comes to mind when, yesterday, we had our general plan meeting, and in the 2015 general plan meeting, they talked about having affordable housing, and that's pretty, every time someone comes before the Planning Commission to propose affordable housing, the residents come out and say, well, somewhere else, not here.
Right.
When we were collecting input for the, this general plan, I remember Ken Lane from Waters Gardens tied a bunch of pressing Prescott issues together. So you may or may not agree, but I thought it was a logical knitting together of issues. He didn't start off with affordable housing. He started off by saying, we don't have enough good doctors, and asked me, do you know why that is? And I dummied up and said, no. And he said, that's because our schools are deteriorating. I think I've heard that. And he said, you know why that is? Because we can't keep and attract good teachers. That's why we need affordable housing. So this, this plan seems to comport with Ken Lane's idea of how to take care of medical, the schools, and affordable housing in one nice package.
That's a nice daisy chain of, of issues that are all, hopefully, addressed by something like this. One of the other things to consider is that, as opposed to all of the other projects you've seen before you, this one has known clientele. The others are simply marketed. We're going to market it as affordable housing at $2,000 a month for rent, which teachers and policemen and firemen can't afford, but they don't have a targeted population. These will be teachers, policemen, and firemen. That is the plan, that's the process, and ultimately that will be part of the agreement we make with PUSD if the city participates in some of the infrastructure work, which seems to be what, what direction we're headed in. The idea of this changing to another kind of use would require, again, a public process, notification of the neighbors, the opportunity for this commission to have input on it, and again, opportunity for us, the Planning Division, to have input on it. We've looked at this, a number of other departments We've looked at this, a number of other departments have looked at this, Waters Sewer Utilities has been deeply involved in it, Public Works, Flood Plane Management. We've looked at it from the perspective of, is it practical? And the answer is yes. It's practical. It can be done, it can be successfully done, and it can be successfully managed by the school district because other school districts do the same thing elsewhere. So we know there's a model that works, and that's important to not reach too far out while trying to address a problem. Reaching far enough out that you know someone else has done it gives you some comfort that it can be successfully completed. From a staff perspective, the city of Prescott's been working on, I appreciate Mr. Gambogi's mention of the 2015 plan, but I participated in the 2003 general plan development, and affordable housing was a major issue in 2003. There's been little done to address it, and I think one of the reasons for that is no one wants to stick their neck out and do it first. Having a successful project will encourage more successful projects. There's an old saying in business that nothing breeds success like success. So we want one that works, and we believe this is a great spot for that. Again, that's my professional planning position on it.
Tom? Thank you, Tom Riley. Affordable housing was talked about when I was on city council, and that was an eon ago.
You were on city council when I came to work here, sir.
That was about when the earth cooled.
I was here before dirt. At any rate, though, one of the keys in affordable housing is ownership, and that's why I brought up the question before. It's always affordable when you first build it, and that's the intention, but when the first buyers come around and they turn around and sell it, it's no longer affordable because they're taking their profits on it. So the key to affordable housing in our current market is going to be ownership and the consistency of ownership
Stability.
That is looking to do that, stability. So that's one of the questions that I'll be asking for PUSD when they come up to talk.
Any further questions for staff?
I'm available for questions as they come up later.
I have a question, Jim Kloszuski. So the current subject site is actually, right now, residential, the school's on residential zoning?
The school's on single-family residential zoning.
Okay. My question is, do you know the subdivision in which this project is in? Do they have CCNRs that would prohibit manufactured homes?
No. No. Now, the school site itself is actually not in a subdivision. It's an unsubdivided parcel. The subdivisions around it, I believe, do not have that limitation, so the school site itself is outside of a subdivision.
They do not. They used to live in that area.
Would the applicant like to come forth? Now, which hat do you have on now?
The applicant hat. It's good to be on this side of the table. Actually, I think it should be a tie. You should have an applicant tie, because you so outdo me in ties every time.
Clark Tenney, 3282 Pamela Street, Prescott, Arizona. I work for Prescott Unified School District. I'm our Assistant Superintendent for Human Resources, and so this is of particular interest to me. I tried to jot down the good questions that I heard. If I don't address all of your questions, please do let me know. I'd be happy to answer any additional questions that come to mind as well. Had a really good presentation of what we see as the practical aspects and the advantages to both the school district and the city broadly of rezoning this just portion of our property there. It may be interesting to note that we own eight properties in town, the school district does, you all, right? We collectively own those properties. This is the only one that's not already zoned multifamily. So if we were doing this, if we had room to do this anyplace else, which we don't, we wouldn't be coming to at all, we would move on with the project on the city council level, but this one does need to be reconsidered for, or considered, rather, for rezoning, so I appreciate you doing that today. One of the great first questions that was asked was, would we turn around and sell it? A, that would be completely counterproductive to what we're trying to accomplish in the first place, but B, that's not a decision that we make, it's a decision that everyone in this room would make. We have to go to the voters for that. So we would have to have on the ballot to sell any portion of our property, of the school district property. So that's simply not something that is likely or potentially feasible. One of the issues that wasn't brought up that we feel is key as well is that most of, we try to share our facilities with the community to the extent that we can. If you go to most communities, you'll see that their gates are locked, people can't get on the playgrounds, can't get on the track and field and whatnot. For the most part, we do not operate that way in PUSD. We prefer not to operate that way. But this school has, unfortunately, over the last few years especially, been the subject of vandalism in quite a few places. It's relatively near the Pepper Tree Park, the city-owned Pepper Tree Park that was vandalized just recently, where the equipment was burned by someone, there was arson there. We've had similar issues there with people climbing on top of buildings and destroying things and whatnot, and so unfortunately, for the last about year and a half, two years, we've had the gates locked at night, and we haven't been able to allow neighborhood children and families and whatnot to play on the playground equipment or the fields, things like that. We feel this will be potentially a solution to that if we have four teachers living right there on the campus, as well as a firefighter and a police officer. We feel that'll, we're not going to ask any of those people specifically, "Would you supervise and make sure things are good?" But just that presence, we feel, will mitigate the problem of vandalism that we've had. That's also that back area that we're looking at there up on the screen, you can see where the grass is not planted, is just gravel at this point, and it's a place that unfortunately, on certain weekends, people have gone and partied, and there's been alcohol use and drug use and things like that, and that will certainly be eliminated with this. So in addition to the six or seven other advantages we see to this project for the community and for the school district, there's another one, might be useful to point out. Great question was asked about the ball field. So there is a, there's a, not a Little League ball field, but it's a ball field that is owned by the school district that we, in our partnership with the city, have allowed use for the Little League, league, I guess? Little League league? That's kind of redundant. There you go, perfect. Appreciate that. You can see where the fence is. It's a considerable distance already. It's pretty rare that people hit home runs over that fence. You would have to hit a major homerun over that fence as well as a foul ball for it to come anywhere near the homes that we're planning. But if we determined that was an issue, as has been mentioned, there's ways to mitigate that. It's very, very, very unlikely to be an issue. You can see the infield and then how far we're looking, extending beyond that. The baseball field itself would not be impacted in any way. There is a soccer field next to that, and we will be removing some of the turf, so there'll be a water use advantage as far as that is concerned. You can see we're looking about, eliminating about 20 feet, I think, of the, 20 linear feet from the gravel of the turf in order to fit the homes in and then have some little use water landscaping around there as well. And it still leaves plenty of playfield for the students. We've talked with the current principal, the previous principal, and the principal before that, none of them had any concerns at all. Actually, once we take out about 20 feet of turf, we'll still have over three times the play area at Taylor Hicks that we have at either Lincoln or Albiad Elementary School. So there's, again, 300% of what's available at the other schools. Another good question that was asked was about the rent. We haven't determined that exactly this, well, it's not in stone at this point, but the price point we're looking at at this point is $1,200 a month for a two-bedroom detached home. That's about half of market rate from what we're seeing, and also importantly, it's about 30% of what a new teacher would make in our district, which makes it, by definition, affordable housing. As George mentioned, this is really key for us. We have, well, in Arizona, you're probably aware of this, I'll be brief on this, but in Arizona, there are currently over 2,900 teaching positions unfilled right now. We're in the middle of the school year. 2,900 teaching positions. In PUSD, we don't have nearly that problem. It's a great place to live, as you know, we've got a great reputation. It's relatively, compared to other districts, getting harder all the time, but it's relatively easy for us to recruit folks. So we have people who say, "Yeah, I want to move up from Phoenix, yeah, I want to move over from Missouri or Colorado or whatnot." Say, "I'll take that math teaching position, fantastic." And again, as the HR director, I've unfortunately dealt with this directly over the last few years. We've had people verbally accept a teaching position with us, and seven or 10 days later, they call me back on the phone, they say, "Holy snakes, I had no idea how expensive it is to live there compared to what school districts pay in Arizona." I know that you're just above the average for Arizona in spite of the fact that your community has rejected a budget override the last two times you've gone to them, but the salary is okay, but it's not okay for, in comparison to what housing costs. I'm sorry, I have to turn down the position. And at that point, we've called everybody else up and said, "The position is filled, sorry, they've taken a position in St. Louis, or Seattle, or Salt Lake, or Seligman," and we're unable to get those folks. So it's a real problem in our community. And as Mr. Worley mentioned, the idea is not to fundamentally change the housing market in Prescott, but just to give a landing place for professionals for one year to come in, and two years at most, if someone can show extenuating circumstances that there's a reason for us to extend the lease a second year, we would consider that. But in general, we're looking at one year for a firefighter who's new to the city of Prescott, police officer who's new to the city of Prescott, and then four teachers new to the city of Prescott to be in a nice home. We've got, actually, do you mind bringing those up? We've got some pictures of what the homes will look like. When people are manufactured housing, they sometimes think of some dilapidated trailer someplace. And we have talked with two folks in the neighborhood who have some concerns about this, and perhaps they'll speak with us today about that, and I'll appreciate what they'll have to say for sure, but it's worth noting that these homes will be about 50 years newer than most of the homes in the neighborhood, and they're actually quite nice-looking. I don't know that there's going to be a major impact on property values. As you know, I don't need to tell you, you're the expert on this. Typically, when property values are determined, we're looking at comparable homes, these are not comparable homes, but they will be much newer and quite nice, and we feel it's a good solution. I think I've addressed most of the questions, but what other questions do you have for me?
Clark Tom Hodgson.
Yes.
Within the organization of Prescott Unified School District.
Yes.
Who would manage these properties? Would it be the school principal, or is it somebody else embedded in the organization, or?
That's a great question. With our budget, we looked around for people who were sitting around much of the day, looking for additional work. We couldn't find anybody who fits that description, so, yeah, that's a terrific question. We would, oh, there's one other big piece that I forgot to mention, I'll mention just a moment. At any rate, we would look for a property management agency most likely to do this for us and use the revenues from the monthly rent to pay for that. So no additional funds would come currently out of school district budgets to do that. We'd bring in, you know, $1,200 a month roughly, times these six homes, and that's going to cost nowhere near that for property management.
The reason I ask is this is outside of your normal business.
Yes, yes, this is not in our wheelhouse for most of us. Actually, we do have a couple of people with background in this kind of thing, but they have full-time jobs, and honestly, there, you think there's no fat in the city? There is no fat at all. We're at the bone in the school district, so. The other piece of this is very exciting. The entire project, we've received bids and whatnot, we've got our contractor here in the room, if you've got questions for him as well, Mr. Rocha. We're looking at about $1.5 million for utilities, all of the homes, the landscaping, the signage, et cetera, for this, and that's a substantial amount, but we've got that amount available in school district funds from the sale of Dexter and from Miller Valley Schools, which were obviously approved by the voters. That wasn't something that we just said, "Hey, let's sell those." We had to go to all the voters and a strong majority of voters that, you know, that makes sense.
Clark, the other question I had was, would these be dedicated to freshly minted teachers, or would they be available to a more seasoned? And could you, can you adjust the rent proportional to the salary, or?
Yeah, great question. We hadn't done, in terms of adjusting rent proportional to salary, it's actually the case that a brand-new teacher and a seasoned teacher don't make that much difference from one another, frankly. We don't have a lot of money for that kind of thing. We do the best that we can. Absolutely, the idea is these would be set aside for new teachers, so as we hire some, we're in our hiring season right now. If someone was coming in from, let's say, Colorado and said, "I'm looking for a place," yeah, absolutely, I'm interested in a 900-square-foot home. I know it'll be 20 feet from my neighbor, I'm totally good with that, I just do need a landing place to find something that suits my family going forward, so that we would offer it to those folks until the four are filled up. And then if by chance, I don't anticipate this, quite frankly, I don't think we're going to have 25 people clamoring for this, but I'm confident that we'll fill four each year. If by chance we ever had a situation where we didn't, we would make it available by lottery to current teachers in our district, yeah.
The only problem I have with this is the magnitude of it. It's not big enough.
Oh, wow. We'd love to have more space available. There is a very rocky, hard-to-build area behind Granite Mountain School that we looked at initially, and if this is very successful and we find there's additional need, we may do that. We've talked with the city just conceptually about some vacant lots that are downtown that were condemned and razed years ago, that the city doesn't have a good use for, that we might partner with them in terms of make be a long-term lease where we could build and have single-family homes, et cetera. So there's lots of future options as far as magnitude where we could move forward with this, but we've got a flat piece of land right now that's unused, and we thought, "Let's start right here and see how this goes." I mentioned the total price of $1.5 million. Some pretty exciting news, there's a federal grant that's being administered through this state and the Tijavapi County that we applied for a couple of months ago. We've been putting together things, and we found out, the timing is excellent, last night, from Tim Carter, who's our county superintendent. We are pleased to announce that Page Unified, $400,000, Prescott Unified, $500,000, and Sedona Unified School Districts will receive initial matching awards for the purpose of building housing for instructional staff. That's, so that half million dollars that will be coming into our community is an exciting thing. It will offset fully a third of the cost of this, and it's provisional upon your vote this morning, actually. What other questions do you have for me?
Ted?
I'm looking at this poster, so the manufacturer homes would come furnished. I was looking for the word. So do they come furnished?
So utility, or excuse me, not utilities, what are those called? So, utili-- or, excuse me, not utilities, what are those called? The refrigerator and stuff? There's a word for that.
Appliances.
Appliances, thank you. Some of the basic appliances, like a range, I believe, are in it, but they're not going to come furnished.
Okay. Second question, kind of an order-of-magnitude math question.
Yes, sir.
I think I heard you say you would make these available to new teachers.
Yes.
For a year, maybe two years, with extenuating circumstances. When does a new teacher get their first pay raise, and what percent would it be?
That's a terrific question. Not directly germane to the rezoning, but it's a good general question to have in your mind. So we go, the legislature each year tells us how much money is going to be available for funding. The key addition that we have to money each year is the actual rate of inflation, which, as you know, this year was quite high. This last past year was 8.4% or 2%, whichever is lower. So this last year, our costs went up 8.4% plus. We got an additional 2% roughly from the legislature. And so we use that money very creatively to go to our governing board body like yourselves and make recommendations. This last year, in fact, what was this, two nights ago, we went to them to recommend a raise of 4% for teachers, and they approved that. So they, after the first year, to answer your question, they go one year with us, whatever is available, we recommend to the governing board, and if the governing board gives the thumbs up, then they get a raise. So for years and years, my first, I moved back to town full-time. We had a home here the entire time, but I taught overseas for years. Moved back to town full-time in 2007, which was right before something really bad economically happened. My first eight years with PUSD, I received a 3% raise total in eight years.
American dollars?
Yes. Fortunately, though, teachers who have been with us the last seven years have received 40% in raises. We're aggressively moving forward. And just this last year, we moved above the state average for teacher pay. But again, in comparison to how much housing costs are, it's not even close. It's not even close. And Chief Bonney of the police department has told me the very same story. They recruit people, they're excited to come, and they look, and they say, whoa, I can't live there. So maybe we'll take care of that issue to some extent.
Tom Riley, did you mention earlier that when you said $1,200 a month for a two-bedroom?
Yes.
And the plan you're showing here is just one bedroom?
I think you'll see in there, there's a one, do you have the two-bedroom one as well? Did we bring the one-bedroom up?
There's going to be a combination out of two bedrooms.
No, yeah, good question. We initially looked at a one-bedroom option and a two-bedroom option, and each of the ones planned are two-bedroom. I appreciate you clarifying.
Okay, thank you for that clarification. I don't need to say it.
Yeah.
I'd take your word for it. You're a councilman.
They're 896 square feet, I think, is what it's, so, you know, reasonable amount of living space for a couple and maybe a child, that type of a thing.
No, I just wanted to clarify, because I was looking at one bedroom, and your word is good enough for me because you're a city councilman.
If there's a family of seven moving in, they're on their own. But if we've got a small family, it should be adequate.
And just to help with any future motions, there are no fireplaces.
Any other questions?
No, but it was a comment that I would like to make. And I think that the foul ball question that was raised by Commissioner Gamboge, he was referencing his own athletic properties. As to what might happen in the field.
I thought we were in for some kind of terrible pun, so that's actually, that's actually bad.
Before you go, FYI, your concept of having rent of around 30% of annual salary is very similar to what Habitat for Humanity does.
Oh, excellent.
So that's affordable housing, too. So if that helps your guidance.
Right. We're absolutely all about keeping this affordable, having workforce housing. These are professionals in town. We're not, you know, trying to house homeless people here temporarily. We're not looking to have a major deleterious impact on the neighborhood. These will be homes that are, in most cases, 50 years newer than the homes that are right nearby them. As you can see from the outline there, not substantially smaller in some cases, and quite nice. And again, there'll be a safety aspect that I think will benefit the neighborhood as well. So there are certainly people with legitimate concerns that you'll hear over the next few minutes, but that's our perspective on things.
Okay.
Appreciate your time.
Thank you, sir. Are there members of the public who'd like to make a comment concerning this? Yes, sir? We need to have you state your name and address again, sir, please.
Yes, sir. My name is Thomas Jaramillo. Thomas Jaramillo. My address is 535 Roman Avenue. I'm directly right, my backyard is directly facing the property that we're talking about. The one sideways right there, the diagonal trailer, our module home, that's my property there. My concern is, being affordable and modular homes, that would most likely drop to my property value, and my taxes would probably go up for this. According to statute ARS 15-432 clarifies, "The governing board may construct or provide enrolled district housing facilities for teachers and other school employees that the board determines are necessary for the operations of the school." Because of the statutory language, if school districts want to build teacherages directly in urban areas, the statute would have to be amended to either remove the word rural or add the words urban and suburban, which was stated that this was a suburban area. So I'm wondering how are they going over the statute to build these? The real concern is teachers' pay. We're the third lowest in the country of teachers paying. Teachers coming here to these things are probably going to be here for a little shorter time period, waiting for another phone call from another state, which would pay $10,000 to $30,000 more than the surrounding states pay. So this is basically a Band-Aid, is what this is. And it's affecting the neighborhood with their value of their properties. And there's other options. I mean, subsidize first-and-months last rents for teachers, security deposits. I'm wondering if these have been tried yet. That's what my concern is.
Okay. Any questions?
Real quick, can you spell your last name?
Jaramillo, J-A-R-A-M-I-L-L-O.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you for your comments, sir.
Excuse me?
Thank you for your comments.
Yeah, also, what is this going to cost? I was told anywhere from like a million and a half dollars. That's $250,000 each for a modular home. That's like outrageous. I mean, there's other ways we could go about this. That's a lot of money for a modular home. So I'm wondering, why is it costing so much?
And I can answer a small piece of that. There are water and sewer infrastructure extensions that would be necessary. So I think the cost that was mentioned by PUSD is the overall cost, not the cost of just the homes. So it's the water and sewer utilities as well.
Okay, what about the ARS statute? I just.
I'm not familiar with that statute.
Mr. Chairman? I have a question for the speaker. Have you brought this up to the Prescott Unified School District at their meetings?
No, this is the first meeting I attend to.
Okay, well, I'm going to suggest, number one, that the issues that you're raising are not in the purview of this commission to address. And that's number one. Number two, I think that the logical place for you to bring those questions, and they're good questions, needs to be to the Prescott Unified School District directly and not us at the Planning and Zoning Commission. It's outside of stuff that we can do.
The statute here would fall under planning and zoning.
And as my understanding, isn't Prescott considered a rural area?
We can speak to that if you'd like.
It's not part of this, it's not part of what we do. City Council will take care of that, and they will address those things, but we don't.
Mr. Tenny, would you want to make any comments concerning this?
If you can, if you'd like.
Yes, please.
I'll need the mic.
Thank you, sir, for your questions.
So I believe I had the opportunity to speak with Mr. Jaramillo on the phone about a week ago. I appreciated his good questions at the time. And he's exactly right, there is a statute that tells what governing boards are, outlines what governing boards are allowed to do, lots of different things. They can expel pupils for misconduct, et cetera. I won't go through the 42 things that they get to do. But one of them is to construct or provide in rural districts housing facilities for teachers, et cetera. Nowhere in that statute does it define rural. So it's kind of potentially up to us. However, in a different part of the same section of Arizona, revised statute, Section 15, we sought some legal advice for this from the gentleman at the Department of Education, who is over federal and state grants, so who's specifically administering this grant. And he advised us that the definition of rural, well, he pointed us to ARS 15-249.13, which specifically is titled "Definition of Rural for Purpose of Federal Funding Eligibility", which this is. "For the purpose of federal funding eligibility determinations are made by the Department of Education, and then involve geographic location of a school district or charter school." This is short, by the way. Rural means located either in one of two things. One, in a county with a population that is less than or equal to 10% of the population of the state. We're about 3% of the state in Yavapai County, so we definitely meet that. We also happen to meet the other definition, in a county with a population that exceeds 10% of the population of this state, but that is located more than 10 miles from a municipality with a population of more than 50,000 persons. So we meet actually both of the definitions of rural for this, both legally and for purposes of this funding. So it's a really good question, and there's a very definite legal answer to that. Do you have additional questions for me?
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Ben.
Yes, sir.
Good morning, everyone. My name's Ed McCabe. I live at 1984 Campbell Avenue, which is pretty much adjacent to the properties we're talking about. I had a couple of questions, but I think the comment of one of these fellows has diffused them and suggested that what I might want to ask the commission today is more appropriately directed toward the school board. So I'm not going to ask you what I had prepared to ask you. So what is it that this board is going to consider? You're not going to consider the value, or the, yeah, the value of this solution to the board's problem? That's not your purview. What is it you're going to consider when you vote on whether you're going to put what is basically a mobile home park in an established, single-family residential neighborhood? What is it you're going to look at? I have a lot of, a lot of concerns about this, but I'm not sure they relate to what one of you guys said is what you folks are concerned with here.
We deal, we deal with the zoning of it. And you're having a change of zoning from single-family to the multifamily. And we look at that and the percent, you know, why is that being requested? That's the basic thing we're doing.
And what goes into that why? Someone's trying to solve a problem or an issue? Why are they coming here? And that's what I'd want to talk about, but it sounds like that's not really your purview here.
In what way do you think it's not our purview?
Well, this fellow here suggested that there are alternative solutions to putting a mobile home park in a residential neighborhood. Is that something you would consider as part of your decision-making process? Because if it is, you know, I'd have something to offer. But if it's not, I don't want to take your time.
The property owners make the decision of what they want to do with their property. They come to us if there needs to be a change in the zoning for what they would like to do. They present reasons for it. Staff presents information on it. We ask questions, and then you get seven different individuals here with their own thoughts on this, and they make the decision, is this a good change to make or not a good change to make?
Okay. Let me just say then, considering, considering the type of neighborhood it is and how long it's been there, and the decisions people made when they bought in this neighborhood, I think it's important to consider, this board to consider, an additional alternatives to solve the school district's problem. For instance, why go into a million and a half-dollar build-out, which will permanently adversely impact this neighborhood, when they could follow a corporate model? This problem has existed in the corporate world forever. When we tried, when I was in corporate, trying to transfer people to California, it was impossible to entice them to move from the Midwest to California based on future promotional opportunity or career advancement opportunities, because we had to overcome the cost of living right off the bat. And a way to do that is to offer a one-time stipend, a one-time financial offering to offset X. And the prospective employee and the corporation would say, what is the problem we're trying to solve? Problem we're trying to solve is cost of living, cost of housing. Specifically, it looks like a $1,200 problem a month, and we'd like to solve that for 24 months. You do the math, and out of the budget, I'm not sure how that works, but it sounds like there's a million dollars the district has to throw at this. $1,200 a month, that's a lot of months of supplementing a prospective new employee's cost of living here. And we don't have to go through this, we don't have to adversely impact the neighborhood, just do what corporate America's been doing for as long as I can remember. And then when the person moves out, you don't have this continuing cost to maintain. When that person moves out, that $1,200 goes away. So I'd just like to offer that as, actually, it's a question at this point, but as an idea if it's worth anything.
Okay.
But thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir. Any other members of the audience like to speak?
Hello, my name is Tim Devi, 2003 Meramonte Drive, so just barely down the hill from where that is, Campbell turns into that. I was just going to say, when my wife and I heard about this project, we actually got excited. I have three kids at Taylor Hicks, and my daughter has lost teachers that leave already. And this isn't a new problem. We experienced it when we lived in other states. I will say, if, my wife and I have talked about it recently, if we hadn't moved here a few years ago, we wouldn't be able to afford to buy a house here now, or even rent. It's crazy. So I understand there's all sorts of issues that PUSD has to face. I mean, there's a lot of Band-Aids that are on problems, because there's a lot of bureaucracy in government, and where funds can go and where they can't, and so on. But speaking of corporate America, we take a different approach. Company I'm with, we actually have residence, temporary residence at each of our facilities throughout different states. And so when we bring in new employees from other states, they can live at that residence temporarily. Now, something PUSD will have to work on is, what's the incentive to stay after that short period of time? But for us, that has worked extremely well. It makes it so it's right by the facility, people in a new area then have a way to get to work very easily, because then you also, now you'll also help with things like transportation, gas prices. So that's been a successful model for us. And so we work, I work in the flour-grain food industry, and it's hard to find people to move to rural areas to work in that. So those are the kind of things we face, and it's been successful. So I can just say, as a parent and as someone who lives in this area, I'm not too concerned. I mean, I think, to me, it's something, it's a, it's really just a stopgap for teachers so they can get here, and I just want the best teachers for our kids. I hope there's other solutions that come later on, but that's something PUSD and we'll have to vote on as citizens in regards to pay and so on. But I personally don't have issue with this, this plan, so.
Okay, thank you, sir. Appreciate your input.
Good morning. I want to clarify, I'm Brandon Montoya at 2100 Meramonte Drive, which is just up the street from the school. So even though I happen to be a councilperson, I'm actually speaking as a resident of this neighborhood. So, you know, I'm wearing my resident of the neighborhood tie. So I will tell you, as a property owner in this neighborhood, I don't have objection to this project, and I see a lot of value that it brings personally. One of them is that I'm also a parent. I have a seven-year-old son. As Mr. Tenny pointed out, this is a locked, open space in my neighborhood. And as Councilman Tenny will tell you, I have complained vociferously to him about that number of times, because it's unfortunate that I can't take my seven-year-old down the street to the nearest park to play. So the benefit that he is talking about of having onsite someone who would maybe, again, not that we're going to ask those people to supervise the school zone, but that that presence would make it more accessible. That's a good thing, in my opinion. I also don't really understand how folks can be both balking at the price of the project and whether or not it will come in at affordability, and also suggest that it's going to be detrimental to their property value. I can't, in my mind, reckon those two ideas. Either your property value is going to go down because it's a really negative project that's going to be in your neighborhood and a plight, or it just doesn't make sense to me personally. So I don't, I don't see the adverse impact. And I guess I also find question with folks that would say that it's an adverse impact to have a policeman and a fireman and teachers live in your neighborhood. That just doesn't square in my mind either, personally. I would be glad that a policeman would live in my neighborhood. It would make me feel safer. So I guess I don't get that. And the other thing I'd say that you need to consider is that it's really easy to stand up and say, I don't want this in my neighborhood, and say that the school district should pursue other problem, other ways to solve this problem. But they have, and they haven't found success. And then they came up here just now and said, this is a solution. Oh, and by the way, we offset a third of the cost to do this. I mean, I don't know many people who come to you to say, we're willing to pitch in to solve a problem. And by the way, the school district could have just said, we're going to put six of these in for teachers, and I bet Mr. Tenny would tell you that they would use those all for teachers. But instead, they're coming to the city and saying, we're pitching in for police and fire, because we know you're having the same problem. So I, you know, I just don't see the problem with this project personally as a property owner in this neighborhood. I, you know, I've owned my home in this neighborhood for like five years now, and I can't imagine that it will adversely impact my property value. But that's me. I mean, I, in Prescott, my sense is that, and you folks live here, too, there's not a whole lot that can drive down price values here. That's why it's not affordable. So I just, I disagree with that sentiment, and I would encourage you to approve this project, if for no other reason, so that my son can go to this park without having to jump a fence and trespass on PUSD's property. So those are my thoughts. Thank you for hearing me.
Thank you. Other members of the public want to make any comments?
Thank you. Jody McCabe, 1984 Campbell Avenue. I guess my comments would be relative to a word that was used quite often in the presentation, and that was, this is an experiment, which means it has, by its definition, an unknown outcome. And I guess I would really like the Planning and Zoning Commission, and later on the city council, to consider if there are any protections that can be put into. Council to consider if there are any protections that can be put into the wording of whatever comes out of this as an authorization for this change if the outcome is not as intended. And that was specific to what happens if it's not successful and PUSD wants to sell this to the highest bidder who might just put it out there and it just no longer becomes housing for teaching, for teachers, for police and fire if it just becomes a mobile home park in the middle of a residential neighborhood. That is a concern that I have. I am all for the idea of making this affordable for professionals who need to come into our community to better it, but I am concerned with that. And I also, with regard to Mr. Montoya's comment about, I would like to see the park or the grounds of the school be open without these big gates and padlocks on it. And I would like that to be, if it can be put into the wording of the approval for this, I'd like to see that those gates come down, those padlocks come off and the open area of the school become more public space than it is right now. Thank you.
I might make a comment here. Mr. Tenny can correct me, but I believe if this property is ever thought to be sold by the school district, you have a vote in whether it's being sold or not. Is that correct, sir?
Absolutely. Yeah, I mentioned that earlier. You have to get a majority of people in an election to agree to sell it. Again, it's completely antithetical to what we're trying to accomplish here. We haven't spent a ton of time and effort on this trying to get homes for te... I should put it...
There is no contemplation of ever selling it. I can say that publicly and you can underscore that and highlight it. What we need is homes for teachers. We don't, we don't need, by the way, people have said mobile homes a lot of times, these are not mobile, they're foundation-built homes. But at any rate, there's absolutely no thought of selling these and even if we did, you're exactly right. You'd have to get a majority of our community to say, yep, that's a good idea. And from what I'm hearing today, there's a lot of people who would be opposed to that and I would be the very first person to be opposed to it.
Okay. Thank you, sir.
Another piece that was mentioned just earlier, very, very quickly, is around budget funds and whatnot and could you not just pay people? Our budget doesn't work like, you know, your checking account for your family. We have certain pots and the state says you may use this for items one, two, and three and nothing else. What we're using is a fund that is only for building buildings on our school campuses. We can't use that for anything else but that. And again, that's being offset by one-third, 500,000 of that is in the grant and the other just under a million will initially be from our school district. We're looking to get donations to offset that as well. So potentially the entire impact on our budget will be minimal, but we just don't have the budget funds to, on an ongoing basis, offer people cost of living difference allowances like businesses do. If everybody here is super excited about your taxes being raised, vote differently in the next elections and we may be able to look at some of those solutions as well.
Any other persons in the public like to make a comment? I thank all those who came up and expressed their ideas. This is what we want to hear at the commission here. Anything else else, George?
One final comment. We're just because it's, there's a public who's in, so I think that this is not the final decision. I think...
On the advice of my attorney.
Well, that's scary right there.
One issue regarding the potential for change of the site later during the process, not only does this school district have their rules, but as part of the motion and part of our almost every rezoning that we conduct, there is a requirement that substantial conformance to the site plan be met with whatever is eventually developed on the site and maintained on the site. The reason for that is so that we don't get, falling back to my hills in Virginia childhood, a pig in a poke. You're not going to rezone the property without knowing what it's going to be developed like, at least in a pretty solid conceptual site plan, which is what we have now. If that changes, it has to go back through a public process, back through this body and ultimately the City Council. And on the advice of my attorney, I'm going to point out, just for those who are participating in the meeting who aren't members of the commission, this body makes recommendations to the City Council. The final actions are by City Council. So the recommendation that staff is recommending to you, you would make a recommendation to the City Council, the City Council would take the final action on it. So this is not an action today. This is not the end of the story. There is a council decision that will have to occur in support of this recommendation for it to move forward.
Okay.
I'd like to make a comment. Have a question.
Do you want to make it after the motion or do you want to make it before the motion?
It can be made after.
Have a question.
No.
I had one question, just to clarify. You mentioned that these homes are going to be on a foundation. So they're going to be more like modular homes?
It's a one-piece modular building.
Okay.
Effectively. It comes out, it's set in place, but it's not like most people think of modular as being pieces put together onsite.
And then they'll be landscaping perhaps a buffer between the homes and the modular homes and to make it very attractive and, okay.
They're subject to all of our other requirements for landscaping, use of low-water usage landscape materials, but buffering and things like that will be part of the design of the site.
Any other comments or questions?
I have a question for George. George, if the, is the zoning change tied specifically to the project? In other words, if the zoning change was approved and the project was abandoned, what happens to that zoning?
That's a good question. Generally speaking, the zoning stays in place permanently. No other project could come in that's different than the one that we have in this particular case, a site plan attached to it. No other project could come in on that site without amending the zoning, without coming back through this process. So if they abandon the project, the zoning stays in place, five years from now, they decide they're going to move forward with it, they could if it's in substantial conformance to the approved plan that you see today. If anything changes about that, we're back through the public process, back in front of you and ultimately back to City Council.
Okay. So that zoning would happen before the project was approved and if it was abandoned, it would stay in place, that zoning?
Can I address that? I think, and you can tell me if I'm wrong, also with your legal counsel, in the proposed motion, should it be made and should it be approved? This is the subject property in substantial conformance with the site plan. So therefore, if the site plan were to change in any manner, shape or form, regardless of ownership or who it is, if it were to change, even moving one of the houses, the zoning goes away and you have to come back here and go through that process all again in order to be able to get approvals for making those changes. So what we're looking at here is not just the zoning that runs with the land, we're looking at a site plan that runs with the land and with the zoning.
No, I understand that, but the question is, is about the zoning. I mean, they could approve the rezoning and it would remain. And I don't know how, unless legally you can rescind the zoning.
It would remain there, but if they decide to do something else, like put a machine shop back there, they can't.
No, I understand that, but I mean, I'm just trying to establish that the zoning, the zoning change would remain.
Yes, sir.
That is correct. Okay. That's all I wanted to clarify.
Do you want to make a comment? I would like to make a comment. And this is for everyone in the audience and those that are watching online. What you've seen today in the planning commission, we've had two examples. The first one was relatively simple. It was about an apartment complex near the Fry's on Fair Street. And what we considered as the planning commission was, are the setbacks correct? Is it zoned properly or is it out of the floodplain? Those are the technical issues that we act as a kind of a consultant to the City Council. In this second proposal, it's a little different. In the second proposal is a primary example of how the marketplace is not working in Prescott. By that I mean, if we had a plethora of homes, the prices probably wouldn't be as high as they are. And there are probably other economic solutions to the proposal today, but that's not in our purview. Our purview is, is the proposal presented to us within the city ordinance of planning and zoning? And in a little bit, you're going to see a vote on that. If Clark could raise the salaries of teachers, then we wouldn't have a problem. But we're, that's why I say the marketplace is not working real well in Prescott and the school district has constraints. So we have to come up with some type of creative solutions in order to get good teachers to go back to the earlier Daisy train chain of having good teachers and better schools and then better doctors and more capable doctors. So I hope that goes a little bit to explain how sometimes this can get a little muddy because it's not one single issue. It's a series of issues that are linked together that we try to address and solve. And I think Clark's proposal has done a good job in dealing with the constraints that we face in Prescott and coming up with a creative solution. Thank you.
Jim, do you want?
Jim, I just wanted to make a comment regarding values and real estate. I'm a Realtor. I've been a Realtor here for 17 years. During that time, I have never seen our prices other than 208, 9 and 10 drop. We don't know what that means as we move forward in the future, but everything in our community in Prescott has been based on supply and demand. And the entire time I've been in real estate here, we continue to get a huge influx of folks from the West Coast, from Seattle down through California. They're in a position to afford homes that most people can't because the value of the homes that they're selling from where they come from. It is part of what has caused a constant increase in value of all homes at every level. We don't as an industry see that changing anytime soon. We continue to have far less inventory than demand. All the way from Ashfork to Cordis Junction, we have a total of 770 homes on the market as of yesterday. We normally have 1500, 1800 homes on the market at any given time. We haven't seen that inventory for about three or four years. And one of the things that has done is it has helped us keep home prices continuing to grow in every single neighborhood. And even in manufactured homes, right now, I'm working with some people to try to find some that can run anywhere from 60 years old to 10 years old, running anywhere from just under $300,000 to $400,000. I don't see in a project like this that will be cared for and maintained, I'm guessing, by the school district to keep the value of those six properties up, that we should see much impact on the community from a value standpoint. From a rent and affordability, I have one person right now that's asking me to help him find someplace to live. There's 72 homes on the market for lease right now. I can only find seven for them under $1,500 and not a single one of them was larger than 800 feet. The smallest one was 500 feet and the cheapest one at 500 feet was $1,100 a month. So I also think that the proposed price from the city from a real estate point certainly helps with affordability issue for how it's intended to be used.
Is there a motion concerning this?
Mr. Chairman, prior to making the motion, I'd like to make one comment. That would be addressing some of the things, are there other ways of solving this problem? By God, I hope so. I really truly hope that there are other ways to solve this problem. This is one of them. And being one of them, I am of the opinion that this is one that is definitely worth exploring. And to that end, I move to recommend approval of rezoning REZ 2202-002 from single-family SF9 to multifamily medium MF-M, subject to substantial conformance with the site plan.
We have a motion. Is there a second?
Susan Graham, my second.
We have a motion and a second. Further discussion? If not, are all in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion pass.
Take your cell phone and go like that.
I'm not done yet. Staff announcements, updates.
Thank you, Chairman. Tammy Duette, Community Planner. So there was a couple of things. We do have a meeting, your next meeting at the end of the month. We do have some items on that. We have some proposed land development code proposals to change. That's been in the works since 2020, so we're finally bringing those forward to you. So you'll see about three of them, I think, on your next agenda. So we will have a meeting and they'll be in the new council chambers. So we'll be, hopefully that will go pretty smoothly. We have, we're waiting to see how this is all going to work in the new chamber. So be patient with us and with us going, moving forward with that room. So there's some differences.
Now, phone numbers are going to stay the same for the staff and...
We're not moving yet. We don't know when we're going to move yet. They did dimensions the other day demoing this building and might, please wait till we get out. So, or have a place for us, so. But for the general plan update, we wanted to announce our Plan Prescott website is now up and running. It's www.planprescott.com. We are very excited about this finally being live. On this, we do have a public participation portion of it in which we do have a survey for residents to take and also some general questions that they can feel free to fill out where it's just, you just put it, answer the questions the best you can. We do have some input already and we haven't even announced this yet. Let's see what's this one. So we do have, this is the survey, this is kind of the output. You do have to put in your address because it basically, we're keeping track of where the answers are coming from. So if we're missing some neighborhoods or not hearing from certain areas, we can try to reach out to them. So far, without even launching this and making it very public, we've already gotten 89 people to do the survey, which we're super excited about. And then with the general questions that we haven't even brought that up at all, we've had eight people answer them. And then we get to see all the answers that people put in as we print this out. So we'll have a whole bunch of information and moving forward and good ideas and input from the people from the residents that fill this out. You don't have to be a resident of Prescott. One of the questions that is asked is, do you live, how long have you lived here or you work in Prescott but don't live here or I don't live here? So we are kind of seeing where people are answering. Out of the 89, you know, we had a pretty gambit here. I mean, for people that answered, 21% didn't live in Prescott, but they work here, which as one of those people that we do contribute a lot to the city and tax dollars and we still want to hear from those people because they do account for a lot of our tax dollars and people coming in to recreate. So we're not just wanting to hear from residents, we are wanting to hear from the other public too that could visit the city. So we just wanted to show you an update of that and we'll continue to show you information as we move forward with this, but we just really excited about the website getting up and running and to start getting input from the citizens as we're starting to review the existing general plan. And that's all I have for today.
Okay. Got a question, George? Do we have any items coming before the City Council that we need to address having representation from the commission?
So the site plan you approved today for Valley will be moving forward to the City Council on the, probably the 20... Sorry, I don't have my calendar. It's the last regular meeting of the month? Yes.
Okay. You're going to contact the next commission member in line to have them attend if they're able to. And for our new members, what we do is whenever an item that has come before us goes to City Council, we have one of us attend that in case there are questions for the council has of us. And, you know, you can wait a little before you go. You don't have to go right off the bat. But if you would like to be involved in that, then you'll be part of the rotation here. If for some reason you don't, just let myself and George know, okay? Anything else?
No, sir.
Then the meeting's adjourned.